Welcome, and we'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. And first, we'll call on Commissioner Schaefer for our prayer, and then Commissioner Jeff Phillips to lead us in the pledge.
I'd ask you all to pray along with me in silence as I ask you to pray to your God, or your supreme being, or to whomever, or to whatever you believe in. I will pray to the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. Dear Father, the one who was, who is, and is to come, we come before you tonight in Thanksgiving, Lord, things that we take for granted so often. We thank you for, for the freedom to come together tonight, for the freedom to debate the problems in this county, Lord, for the freedom to live in this country. We may not always agree with everything, but it's the best place to be. We thank you for the beauty that you've given our cities and our county here in Tennessee, dear Lord. We just ask you to be with us, to continue to be with us, and give us guidance with your spirit. We ask you to touch our servicemen and women, to keep them safe and bring them all home safely, dear Lord. We ask you to pray to heal, to put your healing touch on Tammy Sandlin and Tammy Coates, dear Lord, to heal them from their afflictions. We ask you to be with each one of us and all those that are near and dear to us. We thank you in the name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Please, please, raise your flag and recite the pledge along with us. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Here.
Nineteen present.
Thank you very much. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve as written.
Right, a second from Commissioner Phillips. Is there any other additions or corrections to that? If not, all in favor, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have a resolution of recognition for a championship achieved by Oakland middle distance runner Taylor Cuneo. And Mr. Robert P. is going to be presenting that.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get in contact with Taylor, but are you here tonight? If you are, please come up. Okay. Whereas Oakland middle school student Taylor Cuneo won the cross-country state title recently, and whereas she is the Dresden runner by .19 hundredths of a second, and won in 12:24:69, and whereas we commend Taylor for her dedication and commitment which made this championship possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to Oakland middle student Taylor Cuneo for her achievement, resolved this fourteenth day of November, 2013.
Second by Commissioner Jeff Jordan. All right, all in favor of that, please say aye. And any opposed? That's unanimous, and thank you very much, Commissioner P. And congratulations to Taylor Cuneo. Okay, next, we have a time set aside for public comments, and we have one person that wishes to speak tonight. And Ms. Susan Allen will come forward and tell us her name and address, and make her comments, please.
My name is Susan Allen. I live at 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I am here tonight to invite you all to the Stones River Crafts Association twentieth annual studio tour. And I've probably seen these yard signs around town. The tour is next weekend, November 23rd and 24th. Nothing like visual effects. This year, we've greatly increased the size of the tour, up to twelve locations, and we've added two-dimensional work in addition to the crafts that we've had for nineteen years. The studio tour is a free community event that we, as professional artists, enjoy because it's our chance to show you what goes into making a living as an artist, and explaining how we create our work, show you around our studios, and it's a great experience for school kids, too. It's really quite remarkable that a group of artists who work like the devil to just create our work and try to make a living at it, are able to pull off an event like this and keep it going for twenty years. Quite frankly, though, it's not just those of us who make a living at our craft. We couldn't do it without the generous support of the sponsors that have helped us out through the years by giving their money in support of the arts, so that we can do the advertising to make this available to the whole community. And I'm going to shine the spotlight on one of our special sponsors tonight because he's here, and that happens to be Commissioner Jeff Jordan with Inside Sports. He's supported the studio tour for two years now. And I suspect there may have been a little arm twisting in Commissioner Jordan's house because his wife Dawn Jordan, who does Egery, is one of the guest artists on the tour, and she is at our studio, my husband's in my pottery studio, Popcorn Studio Pottery. And we're happy to have both of them. We also want you, I've handed out to all the commissioners this flyer, that's also a poster on one side, if you open it up, and I have more available for those of you in the audience who might want to pick one up. And also, in support of our celebration for our twentieth anniversary, we're having a party at the May Day Brewery next Friday, not tomorrow, and it's called Art, Craft, and Beer, and we hope that we get a big turnout to help us all celebrate. Interesting thing that's going on this year is we're having a hundred-dollar drawing for people that come to at least five of the studios, so that's an incentive. Also, you can find the studios, well, each studio will have a couple of red Mylar balloons, so you can differentiate them from the yard signs, because a lot of our supporters have had people looking for artists at their homes, and they'll be where the Mylar balloons are this year. Thank you. Hope to see you all.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Allen. A good report and a wonderful opportunity. Let's see, next, we're going to call on Commissioner Gooch for elections and confirmations.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, Steering has several items for your consideration this evening. On your desk, you will find a list of notary candidates, and I would move for their election, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. All in favor of that, please say aye.
The Chairman.
Did I, did I, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Mr. Stevens, I apologize.
No problem. My sister is on this list of notary applications, and I wanted the record to reflect that I am abstaining from this vote.
Okay, thank you, we will make note of that. So now, if there are no other comments or questions, all in favor of that, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Second, we need to fill a citizen-at-large vacancy on the Audit Committee to expire September 2014. Steering nominates Mrs. Teresa McKee. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, then please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Announce a vacancy on the School Board to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Tim Tackett to expire August 2014 for Commission Districts 14, 19, and the great District 20. Fourth, we need to announce four vacancies on the Agricultural Advisory Board, to announce two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board, and to announce vacancy on the Library Board.
Commissioner Serenio, were you trying to say something? Okay, would you, go right ahead, what was that, would you like to tell us? Okay, so he said what you needed? Okay, thank you. Well, Commissioner Jordan.
Yes, sir, thank you. Since, obviously, we're on television, and I want to just refer you back to number three there, the vacancy on the School Board. Our rules, and we, of course, have met on this, the Steering Committee has, and the rules are exactly the same as any other board or commission that we appoint to, but we are asking, although you can apply right up to the Commission meeting night and be nominated from the floor if a member of the general public wishes to do so, however, I think it's proper, and we did mention this at Steering, that we ask, because we have a large district there whose zone lines have changed, it would be of tremendous help to the Steering Committee and to the applicant if they could apply in writing the usual application, which is available in the mayor's office, at least a few days in advance, to where we would have an opportunity, and more importantly, the Election Commission would have an opportunity to check the district lines, because we've already had two or three people that have wanted to apply and have applied, and they had to be checked, and there are problems there. So, please don't wait until that night to apply. And that'll be done, we plan on recommending three or fewer to the Commission on December 2nd. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Point well taken, and I hope we, our public out there are listening, and maybe there are other applicants that wish to do this, and we certainly encourage them to do so. Okay, well, we can then go into our reports. There is no unfinished business tonight. Reports by standing committees, there's not a report from the Purchasing Committee, so we are ready to start on our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Commissioner Ely.
Item K-2A, a request from Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority to adjust loan. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners previously approved a capital outlay note, Series 2006, with the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, with a principal amount of $696,749.96 for the purpose of infrastructure development at the airport business park. And whereas it was approved by the Board of Commissioners that the repayment of the capital outlay note, Series 2006, would be made with monthly installments of $6,600 at a fixed interest rate of 6%. And whereas the Airport Authority is preparing for further infrastructure development and desires to adjust the terms of the capital outlay note, Series 2006, to make the project debt service plan work, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the capital outlay note, Series 2006, is hereby adjusted by extending the term by four and one-half years, lowering the interest rate from 6% to 2%, and adjusting the monthly payment to $3,350. Resolved this fourteenth day of November, 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Stevens, and Commissioner Cook, and others, I'm sure. Any discussion on this? All right, then we will ask you to please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K-2B, a resolution authorizing 2.5 million general obligation bonds for the Airport Authority, approving the issuance of 4.2-
Excuse us, Ms. Ely, does that mean anything, Mr. Robertson?
I'm not sure. Time is-
He's doing well, so we don't want to stop her.
Approving the issuance of 4.2 million airport revenue bonds of the Airport Authority, and amending the county debt management policy. Commissioners, I will remind you, in May, the Airport Authority requested a loan in order to secure a grant from the FAA. They have obtained those funds in the amount of 4 point million, and this is the resolution to complete that project. Resolution approving not to exceed $2,500,000 of general obligation bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the purpose of making a loan to the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport to be evidenced by such Airport Authority revenue bonds, approving the issuance of not to exceed $4,200,000 airport revenue bonds of the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, and amending the county's debt management policy. And if you will go to page two of your document, you will notice Section 1 explains the approval of a loan to the Authority by the county for the projects. Section 2 is the approval of the issuance of the county bonds. Section 3 is the approval of the issuance of airport bonds by the Authority for the projects, and on page 3, in Section 4, this is an approval of the amendment to our debt management policy. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Cook. Any discussion or questions? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
Item K-2C, general fund budget amendment from the juvenile detention. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows from juvenile detention: increased revenues from a Title I grant of $78,131, increased expenditures, part-time personnel, $12,636, other salaries, $42,710, Social Security, $3,432, state retirement, $5,747, disability insurance, $79, employee Medicare, $803, maintenance and repair, $734, other contracted services, $300, instructional supplies, $6,960, other supplies, $3,392, and other charges, $1,338. Resolved this fourteenth day of November, 2013, I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schaefer, any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
Item K-2D, a special purpose fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows from the Sheriff's Department: increased revenue from asset forfeitures, $191, increased expenditures for drug enforcement, $191. Resolved this fourteenth day of November, 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Sandlin, second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
Item K-2E, a request from the city of Murfreesboro for utility easements. Whereas the state of Tennessee, through its Department of Transportation, is making intersection improvements at the intersection of Broad Street and Memorial Boulevard, O'Fort Parkway, and whereas easements for the relocation of certain utilities are needed for the improvements, and the city of Murfreesboro is leading a cooperative arrangement to secure these easements. And whereas Rutherford County owns property known as MAP 91K, Group C, Parcel 53, where two tracks of easements are desired. And whereas the city of Murfreesboro desires to avoid condemnation and purchase these easements at a cost of 10% above the appraisal value, or $44,108 for Track 1, and $16,113 for Track 2. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the necessary sales contracts, a copy of the same being attached here, too, as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim, to transfer and convey the utility easements to the city of Murfreesboro. Resolved this fourteenth day of November, 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
Item K-2F, a request for funding for Smyrna Primary School renovation and addition. Whereas there are currently five portable classrooms and a need for a media center and cafeteria renovations at Smyrna Primary School. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has taken bids for the Smyrna Primary School renovation and addition. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the Smyrna Primary School renovation and addition at a cost of $2,266,500. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding not to exceed $2,200,000 be authorized from the next bond issue for the constructing, equipping, architect fees, and other costs for the Smyrna Primary School renovation and addition. Resolved this fourteenth day of November, 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Allen. Now discussion. Commissioner Allen.
Several of you have already heard a lot about this project. I just want to remind you of a few important points. This is a fifty-year-old school that hasn't seen a major renovation in twenty years. We've experienced a lot of high-density housing, apartments that are being built around this, which is causing an above-average amount of growth for this school. It was already overcrowded before the apartments came in, and already in need of this renovation. But I also want to remind you that almost 73% of the students at this school also receive free and reduced lunch. So by approving this, all we're asking is that all the students in Rutherford County have an equitable education experience, and so I hope that you'll find it in your hearts to support these students and give them their renovation. Thank you.
Commissioner Sandlin.
We had mentioned in budget, Mr. Chairman, about a payment that the city of Smyrna was going to. I'm trying to get rid of this allergy stuff I got going on, but anyway, change of seasons. Do we know anything about that yet? Yes, it's on the books, on the Town of Smyrna's books, and so, as you know, they just have a new town manager, and so I'm sure it'll work through their process. One thing we were talking about in budget is that that would go toward this project, and there's a little difference in numbers here on what we're reducing that to, so that's why I was asking, I thought the School Board was kicking in some money. Well, they hadn't met yet, at the time that we were talking in budget, they had not met, but it's either, it's happened, okay. The School Board did meet on it and authorized that payment, that back payment be applied toward this project. So what are we talking about, total dollars then, maybe coming in off this project? $548,000, it's roundabout.
Commissioner P. Or Commissioner Schaefer?
Well, I voted against this at budget, and I think I need to say why tonight. And I've toured the school, there is no doubt in my mind that they need the renovations and the expansion over there. But I'd love to see it delayed for a year, but I doubt if that's going to happen, but tonight I think I got to speak my piece on it anyhow. And one thing, reason for that, is that right behind me here at the Judicial Building is overflowing, and we've been looking at since, gosh, who knows when, about another one. And we just got some consultants in to give us a new estimate, and basically, since 2008, it's going up from $65 million for the Judicial Building and the garage to $72 million. So that's $7 million in about five years or so. And we have a reappraisal this next year, and supposedly, if you read how it's done and everything, everything is supposed to come out even with what exists. But from the 2010 reappraisal, we're still refunding taxes that were charged to people, and mainly, commercial. So what is our tax base now? We probably don't even really know. And what's going to happen this next year when it comes out? Is it going to be lower? I remember in 2006, the then-county mayor about had a panic attack, when the values went up so much, and the certified rate went down so much. It wasn't our present mayor, by the way. But anyhow, it was an enjoyable day. It was, we were here till five o'clock, hatching around about five or six cents, I think it The consultant for the Judicial Building told us, when he briefed us, I don't know which one, I heard it a couple of times, but it was our population in 2045. Now, I wasn't educated in Rutherford County schools, but I can subtract, that's thirty-two years from now, and our population is to be doubled. And for round numbers, that's 550,000.
Did you want to go, Mr. P? He would be, Mr. P would ask to be recognized next, please.
I believe that was glued in there, wanted me to speak tonight. I also voted against this in budget. However, I'm here tonight to ask all of you to support this issue, but I especially want the commissioners in Smyrna to support this issue. I look back at last year, the reason I didn't support it out of budget, even though, being on the Budget Committee, you learn one thing, you don't always vote for everything that comes up, but you've got to figure out a way to pay for it, being on that committee, and that's our job. So there are times that I don't agree with some of the issues that get voted in up here, but yet, being on budgets, you've got to pay for them, and everything costs. But take Stewart's Creek, for example, there's quite a few commissioners in the Smyrna area that voted no on the tax increase, that paid for that school, yet when you had the ribbon cutting, they were up there saying, hey- hey, welcome to our new school. But that's kind of frustrating for me, but I'd like to help the commissioners up there. I'd like to help the commissioners up there, vote along with them, whichever way that might be. But I'd be happy, and matter of fact, I urge you to support this school. You need the school. I've talked to the principal over there. I hadn't had the opportunity to school, to tour the school, but from the people that I've talked to, you know, these kids deserve a good education as anybody. And everybody in this county deserves the same opportunities, and these kids certainly do. So I urge you to vote in favor of this. However, I want you to recognize that you've got responsibilities to pay for what you're saying yes for. And having said that, I'd like to ask, when we do come to the vote, Mayor, that we do a reverse roll call vote. That way I can vote along with my fellow commissioners from Smyrna. Thank you.
What is a reverse? Sorry, okay, Commissioner C, twenty, twenty, come back around over here. Commissioner McAdoo, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
He cussed on what you wanted to have.
All right. Now, Madam Clerk, are you in position to honor that request?
I am.
Okay. All right, then. Is any other discussion or question? So Madam Clerk, would you do a reverse roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Serrano.
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch.
Yes.
Commissioner Ely.
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Coggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Baum.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes.
Jordan. Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips. Commissioner Jernigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Cook.
Yes.
Commissioner P.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes.
Commissioner Black.
Yes.
And Commissioner Schaefer.
This is the first time that I have never had to vote first on a roll call vote.
Congratulations.
And it's amazing what can happen, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for that healthy discussion. Commissioner Ely, you may continue. Motion carried, by the way.
Item K two G, a resolution authorizing nine point three million general obligation capital outlay notes. This resolution is renewing a capital outlay note that is due in January, and then this will be rolled into a future borrowing. A resolution authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing general obligation capital outlay notes of Rutherford County, Tennessee, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed nine million, three hundred thousand dollars, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof, and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of tax for the payment of principal thereof and interest their own. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Cook. Does anyone have any questions about this or discussion? Mr. Phillips.
I'm assuming that that two million bucks for Smyrna primaries in this, in this bond? Okay.
This is a renewal of this one. It would be included in a future borrowing.
Thank.
But it's not in the nine point three. I mean, it's.
No, it's not part of this nine point three.
Other questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the votes.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. Next, Health and Educational Committee will call on Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, I talked with Principal Harold of Stewart's Creek. A couple of months ago, he agreed to come just whenever we wanted him, and we picked tonight, and he's on the agenda, of course, just to give us an update on, on our newest high school. It'll be hard for you to listen to him and then not leave a Red Hawk fan. And if, if the principal would come on forward, he's not very enthusiastic about this school now, and so he'll be rather dour and very quiet. I think we hired the right guy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Jordan. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor Burgess, and certainly thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here tonight. Now, you gave me four minutes, so I got a lot of passion that's in me, but I'm going to meet that goal. So here we go. October thirty-first, I remember it, and it was 2012. Mr. Odom gave me a call, and he said, you're the first principal at Stewart's Creek High School. Well, that's when the work began, and it has not ended, and it's been a little over a year, and it has been a wonderful journey because of parents, community, students, leaders, and all those I've been with. It is an unusual prospect, by the way, to start off and say you're going to help build a school. Within our walls, I'm glad to say that traditions are being established. Our students and teachers have totally bought in to the fact that we are building a legacy and a history that will continue on. And I'm so excited to be able to, to again thank you, county commissioners, school board members, certainly school system leaders, taxpayers, because you have created a building that is, as far as square footage, is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet. And what you've done is, you've created a place of learning, and you've created in Rutherford County the newest school and the largest school. I come telling you that we have just under fourteen hundred students, and by next year, we will increase by hundreds. And that's very conservative, because if you take our freshman class at five twenty-five, and eighth graders that are coming up, just with freshmens and sophomores, we'll have eleven hundred students, just freshmen and sophomores. So I want to thank everyone for what you've done and what you've created. We also are a place that a lot of firsts are happening. So I can't go through all those, but I'm passionate about it. First wins. Our drama department, the first program, official program put on, was a play that students led and direct, and it was honoring our veterans. It was called Ordinary Heroes. And I'm proud that that was our first there in the drama department. Tonight, we have our basketball team at Beach. Their first games are being played. So on and on I could go. First are happening, we're excited. And I want to share with you this. It is so important that we have the continued vision and support from each one of you. We're excited about what we're building. We had a blending of three schools: Blackman High School, Smyrna High School, and Leverne High School. What we have now is one team. We are Stewart's Creek High School Red Hawks, and I'm proud to say that. And what we also have besides one team, just focused on our high school, is we have a school of families at Stewart's Creek High School. We are one community. When I look out across Red Hawk Parkway, I see out my window Stewart's Creek Elementary and Stewart's Creek Middle School. The wisdom of that is unbelievable. Just drive out, and it speaks of community. And now I want to be remembered tonight, not only for passion, but for brevity. So I will close by saying, there's a lot of things to be positive about as far as Stewart's Creek High School, but uniquely, and it's hard to do, I'm going to select two to close with, and one is community. I am a resident, and always have been, of Rutherford County. Growing up in the Buchanan gum area, if you're from there, I would like to say that my first teachers were Ms. MacNeil, Ms. Lee, and Ms. King, and they were at Smyrna Primary. So don't underestimate for any of us the influence of what we're building as far as citizens and communities and what it means. And the final thing besides community that's being built, may I quickly say this with community, I didn't go in naive. I live in Smyrna. I expected a lot. I tell you now, I could have never, ever estimated what has happened as far as the coming together. It is unbelievable. The second thing and final thing I want to share is this. The future is bright at Stewart's Creek High School, and I'm going to tell you why, because of teachers. The energy, enthusiasm that they have brought in expertise is matched only by our collective commitment to make sure and inspire students to achieve to their fullest potential. So tonight, I started earlier by thanking you for your vision, and certainly for your support. And that was for building. Bricks, mortar, it's been built. But now I want to ask you, on behalf of teachers, and not just at Stewart's Creek High School, to realize that the building up of teachers should never stop. The encouraging of teachers should never stop. And may I say this, I come from a family that both my parents were teachers, so I get it right. And the issue is this, it seems to me that I'm seeing a diminishing in the respect to teachers in recent years. But here's the good news. In Rutherford County, and from our leadership, we have examples where teachers are supported. In Rutherford County, we have a chance to show that the most important spotlight that's ever turned on at a school doesn't happen on Friday nights, and it's not in the theater. And may I say, tonight, we have three hundred students in our theater, all of them grades one through twelve, presenting a common chorus show extravaganza, it's the whole community. But the most important light that's turned on in a school, it's when you get a school teacher and a student, and you turn that classroom light on, and that's when we all know that learning is happening. Let us not forget that. I always ask for that vision and support of never forgetting that, and encourage teachers in every way we can. Thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put an, at end them, onto what Mr. Dr. Harold said. There's also a CTE conference going on at Stewart's Creek tonight. I was able to stop by. I didn't have to listen to any of the speeches because I had to get to here, but it was in the culinary area, and I managed to scarf up and bring tonight carrot cake cupcake with cream butter icing. You can't beat it. It's excellent, so they're doing something right there.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Dr. Harold. It's pretty obvious with your enthusiasm and passion. You represent many, many other principals, and, and all of the staff members that you have assembled together, and we'll give credos to our central staff as well. There's no, no reason, it's not hard to understand why Rutherford County school system is successful, and thank you very, very much. Okay. I will apologize for being a few minutes off schedule on this public hearing. So now we're going to call on Mr. Demossi to come forward. We have one rezoning request, thirteen dash eight zero fifteen, on behalf of Monty Turner. At fifty-two seventy-six Leanna Road, its existing zoning is residential, medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of about one point nine acres out of a total tract of about seventeen acres, so, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. As stated, this property is located along Leanna Road. The applicant's proposing to rezone a portion of this property. The total acreage is about seventeen acres for the whole property. They're looking to do about one point nine acres for use as a Dollar General store. The remaining portions of the property are not proposed to be rezoned at this time. They will remain as RM, which is our residential medium density. They are asking for commercial services, which is similar to the zoning of the other Dollar Generals in our community. Because of this, this portion of this being rezoned, at some point, they would have to do a subdivision plat when they start the site plan review process. Staff's primary concern with this location was the condition of the Leanna Road and Sulphur Springs Road intersection. The applicants have provided staff with a traffic study. The recommendations of that are in your agenda packets. Our engineer has met with their design engineer, as well as the county highway superintendent, and they feel very confident that they can take care of the issues that surrounded that intersection and make it a safer, more functional intersection. There's a copy of a concept plan that I've put on your tables, and also a copy of that in your agenda packets, shows how they're planning to access the property. They will be required to do a full site plan submittal to the planning commission for their review, which will, at that time, look at landscaping, make sure the required parking is, is provided, those type of issues. Based on the analysis that staff performed, and concerning the property's proximity to State Route Eight Forty, it's just right down the street, staff felt, as the planning commission did as well, that this was an appropriate location for this development. The planning commission did recommend in favor of this by unanimous vote. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are there any questions of Mr. Demossi? Mr. P.
That Leanna Swamp Road or Leanna Road? I thought Leanna Road was over closer to Thompson Lane.
It's based on what we, the information we had in our GAS, that's Leanna Road, right there at that spot. Yeah? Yes, sir.
Right. Well, that's a good question, and I cannot help with that answer. So, any other questions of Mr. Demossi before we have the public hearing? All right, thank you then, Mr. Demossi. With that being said, now's an opportunity for anyone that's here that wishes to speak for or against this proposal, to come forward and give us your name and address, and we'll give you a bit of time for you to make your comments. Is there anyone here that wishes to come forward and speak regarding this project? We do have one gentleman, so come forward and give us your name and address, please, and make your comments.
(inaudible) developer for the proposed project there at Sulphur Springs and Leanna Swamp, or Leanna, I'm not sure exactly which, but it's, we're proposing a similar project to what we've built in previous history of the last four or five years in the county and in the city. It'll be a ninety-one hundred square foot freestanding facility, and we're proposing It's with a metal rear. We have adequate parking. We will have stormwater detention.
Are there any questions you might have?
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Turner? Mr. Schaefer?
All I want to know, it's where I think it is from when you all started talking, is not where I thought it was. If I'm on, Mr. Turner might not be able to answer, but if I'm at Thompson Lane, and I turn on Leanna Road, and I go down past Cherry Lane, and I wind around there, and I'm going to run dead end into Central Valley. Is that roughly where it is?
No, you're going the road.
That Mr., this is Mr. Jordan's district, maybe he can help us out here.
Fairly familiar, but they actually call Leanna, what I used to call, I grew up on Leanna Road, when you went to the stop sign at the off Thompson Lane, that used to be the end of Leanna Road. But at some point in time in the last ten or fifteen years, they started calling everything to the left, down to the three-way stop where the little Triway Market is, and there's closed, and it's right there beside that market, at that three-way stop. So.
At that, where the old store was there. All right, any other questions of Mr. Turner? All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this project request? If there's no one else here that wishes to speak, we're going to declare the public hearing closed, and now we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Jordan.
Well, we had a community meeting out there, it was very well attended. Everybody was wanting the Dollar General that I found, and Mr. Turner was very gracious in the meeting to try to accommodate everything the neighbors asked for, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve subject all staff comments.
Second, Commissioner Black. Now, is any other discussion or questions? All right, all of you then, in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any ayes? Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Demossi. Now we can continue our reports on our standing committees. There is no report from property management committee, there is no report from public safety, nor public works and planning, nor steering. Now we're down to any other business. Anyone have any other business? Wow. Okay, if there's any, no other business or announcement, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.